This is the meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 16th. Please stand for the invocation led by Reverend Byron Daniel Mount Zion Primitive Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray? Eternal God, our Father, we honor you this day, and we commit ourselves, Lord God, to being better today than we were yesterday. Father, hear our prayer this morning for peace, strength, wisdom. Almighty God, we thank you for your many blessings upon this great city of Mobile. Lord, there is a remnant that is still leaning upon your word that says that you will never leave us, nor will you forsake us. Continue to be at the heart of all of our decisions on this day, especially at this council meeting. Thank you, Lord God, for the gift of dedicated people who serve in this city council, for each person on this council who lift up the banner of righteousness as a standard bearer for all your people, that they will love and defend the rights and the dignity of your people that they represent. We thank you, Lord God, for our mayor and his leadership. Bless all, Lord God, that are connected in this room this day. Lord, we choose to walk in your spirit, shape our big plans to be poured down from your well, which is rooted in love, peace, and joy. Now, Lord God, we lay ourselves at your feet in the name of Jesus. Amen. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call. Council President Small.
Here.
Council Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave. Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules by Council President.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone at our meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. As to everyone, please pay attention to the rules as I read them out. A statement of rules first asks if anyone has any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance appeal public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. All persons in attendance at the council meeting shall refrain from making any comments regarding the good name and character of any individuals. Using language that results or demeans any person or use of profanity, vulgar language, or gestures. Attendees at the council meeting shall not interrupt speakers engaged in behavior that disrupt the meeting, including but not limited to applause, cheers, jeers, yelling, shouting, or engage in behavior that intimidates others or incites violence or disorder. Any meeting attendees who fail to comply with the directives of the presiding officer to follow the council rules or otherwise disrupt a council meeting in a manner may be held out of order in order to leave the speaker podium and may be ordered to leave the council chamber by the presiding officer. Any person so expelled shall not be re-admitted for the remainder of the meeting from which expelled. Any person making personal, implement, or slander remarks or who shall become a bogus or other violent council rules shall council rules while the council is in session shall be forewill by the presiding officer bear from further orders before the council for a specific and reasonable period of time, not to exceed six months. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Now, the City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 9th. So moved.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. Appreciate you being here. I want to announce a new program that we have for our youth following our Friday night football games. It's called Fifth Quarter. And it's Fifth Quarter with Breakthrough Teens, and it happens every first and third Friday of the month in the area of the game of the week. We'll be hosting the first Fifth Quarter event at the Dodge Community Center this Friday after the fourth quarter of the blunt and vigor football game between 9:00 PM and midnight. This is an event where we hope that teens can relax and enjoy the free food, a live DJ, games, and more with their friends. This event is for teens 13 to 19. For more information on the teen program, check out our website as we continue to add more activities, events, and programming just for teens. I also like to point out to you that we have a new art exhibit at the Mobile Museum of Art. It's called Three American Artists. It showcases the work from a trio of renowned African-American artists, Mark Bradford, Barclay Hendricks, and Glenn Legion. Mark Bradford is a Los Angeles-based artist best known for large-scale abstract paintings and collages exploring the effects of class, race, and gender on urban society. The late Barclay Hendricks was an American painter and photographer known for his life-size realistic paintings of black Americans. And Glenn Legion uses text and light in his conceptual work to explore a variety of themes. It will be on view at the Mobile Museum of Art through May of 2023. This time, I'd ask Chief Lemey to present the Firefighter of the Month awards. And we actually have three of them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As always, we're so appreciative of the time we get to honor our own. It's certainly one of the best things that we get to do, and I wish we could do it each and every week. These are all not firefighters of the month for this month. We're a little bit behind in the scheduling, have some scheduling conflicts, but nonetheless, we wanted to make sure that we spent some time honoring them. Combined in total, the years of service that these three individuals have is nearly 40 years of service to the city of Mobile. And I can tell you, they exhibit the three core values that we try to preach every day: competence, courage, and compassion. We've got firefighter Mark Wilson, driver Mark Wilson, excuse me, has been on for 26 years. And he serves on an ambulance right now. Rescue truck is what we call them, and he serves at Theodore Fire Station. We've got firefighter Geraldine Abear. She's been on just about two years. She's a part of the Honor Guard team, and she's also a part of the Combat Challenge Team, where she won an event recently in Florida. And then we've got firefighter Derek Payne here, who I've worked with several times on a rescue truck, but just been on a rescue truck in Tolmanville and does a phenomenal job in each and every day. They each have things that they've accomplished, and we've written those up. But I just wanted to recognize them today and thank them for their service to the city of Mobile and to the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. So thank you and congratulations.
Joining Chief Lemey and I at the podium is Dr. John McMahon, and I'm going to ask Chief Lemey to make some remarks, and then I'll read a proclamation.
Well, I'm back again. But again, it's a special day, and Dr. McMahon, we wanted to recognize him. He retired recently as our medical director, and he served over 30 years in that capacity. And not only that, he was a physician for nearly 30 years, Spring Hill Hospital alone. But he's responded to events like Amtrak, the Bayway Crash. He was at 9/11. He was also one of the first on-ground with a disaster medical assistance team in Japan, is that right? Japan for the coronavirus. So he has been a tremendous asset, not only to the Mobile Fire Rescue Department as a medical director, but really also to the citizens of Mobile for decades. And we just wanted to honor him and recognize him for that service and to wish him well in retirement, and just to overall give a heartfelt thanks to everything you've done for all the lives that he's touched over the past 30 years. Thank you, Doc.
So I think it speaks volumes of all the firefighters and EMS personnel, paramedics that have showed up today to honor Dr. McMahon. You know, in my brief conversation with Dr. McMahon, I told him that one of the neatest things about being the mayor was the opportunity to meet people that you would otherwise meet who've spent as much time as he has spent trying to make this city a better place to live. And so I know that we have been tremendously blessed and lives saved because of his service. And the proclamation reads, whereas Dr. John McMahon served officially for 31 years as the contracted medical director and unofficially for 34 years maintaining his passion and respect for emergency medical services and the people who provide care through the entirety of his career. And whereas in 1988, Dr. McMahon began working with the City of Mobile's fire department, responding to calls, viewing their processes and aptitudes, observing competencies with patients, noting interactions with hospital staff, and more. In the early 1990s, Dr. McMahon was the only medical director for an EMS fire department in Alabama, pushing for changes in legislation to give EMS providers more allowances in the field, promote education, promote education, and improve skills. Whereas Dr. McMahon's final day was June 30th, 2022, and his radio call sign of MD 109 was officially retired by MFRD, his life and legacy of service will be remembered by all he touched and felt by the hundreds of thousands of lives impacted through his dedication to emergency medical care. Now, therefore, I, William S. Thompson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim August 16th, 2022, as Dr. John McMahon Day. Congratulations, Doc. And I would suggest that all of our firefighters join Dr. McMahon out for a group picture, if y'all would.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for all your hard work throughout the many years. When they used to say Amtrak, I remember I was a little boy seeing that on television, so I know that was a long time ago. But again, thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
If I may, my favorite doc story, I think it's about 2010, when certain group of paramedics asked me to ride a bike doing Montegraw. I think Doc probably rides maybe 100,000 miles on that bike doing Montegraw. And it is extremely hard to keep up with it when they put you beside him to assist in his procedures. Doc is a monster doing Montegraw, and he helps protect and keep people safe. Doc, I hope that you don't forget us and come back doing Montegraw, because we would definitely need you, and thank your wife out there with us also. It was a pleasure to ride with you during those two seasons, and I hope that you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
That concludes my remarks. I'm going to take a picture.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance on Belsaw Avenue for September 3rd and 4th from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Request at Montegraw Park on November 24th from 6:30 AM until 10:00 AM. Request on LaSura Road, October 14th and 15th from 6:00 PM until 12:00 AM. And on Burtonwood Drive, September 3rd from 1:00 PM until 9:00 PM.
So moved.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
There's also a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance on Darwood Drive for August 20th from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Move the table. Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item's table.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Jada McElroy.
Yeah? She's not present.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Good morning. Someone once said, "It is better to have an enemy who honestly says they hate you than to have a friend who's putting you down secretly." Having received instant next-day official responses before regarding matters within this chamber and not yet having received an official response regarding my request for a formal investigation arrives today to address those matters listed on the agenda. In my allotted time, however, I want to take a moment to commend Mr. Dave. This is directly related to Chapter 2 of the Mobile Municipal Code, so there is no need for any senseless interruptions, please. As we each already know, anytime something is done well here in our city, I publicly recognize it. Last week, I challenged this body on the absence of a strong counsel. The word tells us if there be one, destruction doesn't have to consume the entire multitude. Mr. Dave was the ram in the bush last week. The only person sitting here who voted on every single rendition of that. This was true transparent. Now, while since 2016, I can count on the number of God-given things, how many times we've truly and fully agreed on policy. Last week not being one of them, I would be remiss in doing a disservice to our collective community if I didn't acknowledge such significant efforts. Thank you, Mr. Dave, specifically for your transparency. This transparency is missing from Chapter 2 of the Mobile Municipal Code. Just last week, I proposed extremely simple questions regarding agenda items to be voted on that day. Yet, once again, the public was met with stalemate. I urged this body to adopt an ordinance that will guarantee timely, sufficient responses to the various inquiries of the public, especially when there are established timelines for citizens to provide detailed information regarding their petitions and communications. How can you pass agenda items, spending taxpayer money, and not know the basics? Like this morning in pre-meeting, Mr. Delatt was getting grilled in questions regarding an electric garbage truck, but you all had already purchased it. I don't understand that. Those concerns should have been expressed well before we spent nearly a million dollars. This isn't rocket science, not for the sake of time. I will forward specific drafts pertaining to this code chapter later in the week, as I did in April, the last time we fully visited communications before this body. As well, I'll provide the necessary proposal for a needed housing project utilizing ARP funds. Knowing the matters at hand and the available intelligence related to certain local public officials, I speaking for the masses of people. Behoove you all to act with great expediency in approving the mentioned presentation. Also, expect the request in reference to performance contracts, a real solution towards eradicating senseless violence in our city. We have no quarrel solving this ballooning form of crime here. Our ever-growing concern right now is violence prevention. I urge everyone present to not abstain, but instead take a positive, beneficial action on these sentiments and direct obligatory expectations I share today. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Ordinances held over. 64040, rezoned property located at southeast corner of Cottage Hill Road and Solly Road from B2 and B1 to B2. 64041. Oh. We're going to take the second one.
So moved. Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
64041, rezoned property located at 2100 North University Boulevard from R1 to B2.
So moved.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolutions held over. 08675, approved purchase orders for fuel for various city departments. 08676, approved purchase orders for fuel for various city departments. 08677, approved purchase order to classic paint and body for damage repair for ladder fire truck. 08678, approved purchase order to Protech Video for annual software license renewals for Mobile Police Department surveillance cams. 08679, approved purchase order to cone for elevator repairs at the convention center. 21680, authorized contract for medical director services for Mobile Fire and Rescue. 21681, authorized change order with C. Thornton for Hillsdale Ditch increase of $56,738.14.
So moved. Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 31684 through 60692.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in opposed? Rules waived.
If there's no objection, I'll do all of them together. 31684, authorized grant application to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration for fiscal year 2022 marine debris removal, $3 million, no local match. 37685, 686 and 687 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Knucklebones Elixir Company on Government Street. For issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class II package store license to Liquors of Theodore on Highway 90 West. And for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Osaka Japanese Steakhouse on Airport Boulevard. 58688, declare weeds noxious, Group 1631. 6689 and 690 are determining appropriations to Booker T. Washington Middle School and the United Way of Southwest Alabama, serve a public purpose, and approve payment. 6691 and 692 are approving award a special bonus to the firefighters of the month and the officer of the month.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolutions being introduced, 08693 through 21701.
By council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearing. 41702, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to drop off transit to operate a shuttle service scheduled for August 30th. 41703, call for public hearing to rezon property located at 915 and 907 Hillcrest Road from B2 to B3, scheduled for September 13th.
So moved. Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District 5, Councilman Dave.
No announcements.
District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
District 6, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one comment on a couple of reports that I've seen and read over the last week or so that deals with education in our state and city. And we talk a lot about the growth of our city and the risks to our city, and I think this issue with education is probably the greatest risk that I see. The specific report that I'm referring to is one that came out in June with regards to the third grade reading levels in this city and where we fall in the state. We had eight schools on the list where greater than 60% of the students could not read on third grade level. And that's a problem. On the other hand of that, I cold Mertz in the city had a 100% reading capability on the third grade level. So we've got quite a dichotomy in this city of ability to read at that level, at that grade level. So I'm very interested, and I'm searching a way to get input into our school board and to the superintendent to ask why do we have these disparities within the system. But also, when you look at our neighboring counties, you look at Baldwin County, they're over 90% across the board. You look at Satsuma, they're at 92% across the board. Why are we lagging? We've got record spending. We're at $8.2 billion for this fiscal year, spending money on education, which is a state record. I know why people are leaving the city, because our education levels are not where they should be. And I think we've got to have a level of accountability as to why we're not making the grade. We continue at the bottom. Right now, we're number 47 in the nation. Number 47 in the nation in education. And Mobile is towards the bottom of the state. So that puts Mobile at the bottom levels of the nation in education. And we've got all of this technology coming into the city. We've got all of these jobs that are available, and if we can't get them to read at the third grade level, what happens is we keep graduating these folks where they can't read when they graduate. And then we set ourselves up for failure trying to fill a job market with kids that can't read, write, and do math. So I think we've got to stop talking about it, and we've got to start having discussions at all levels to figure out how to deal with this disparity in education. I'm more than happy to entertain ideas and thoughts and concepts. Love to talk to the superintendent of schools, been trying to get in there since November. There's a lot of ideas, but we've got to see some progression. And we've got some great schools out there. Let's figure out how to get all the schools up to that standard. But we cannot keep passing on kids to the next grade that can't read. Thank you.
District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District 11, Councilman Penn.
No announcements.
District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. If you live in the district, you have no doubt seen some resurfacing activity. We were on Schillinger Road for a while. Now, we are on Spring Hill Avenue. It also includes a lot of concrete work, some repairs, as well as placing the ADA ramps on sidewalks. So we're getting some work done on sidewalks, as well as putting these ADA ramps down. So that's where it is, and it is coming from the county's Pay-as-you-go program and the last installment of Pay-as-you-go. Of course, it's directed by the city, but funded primarily on the resurfacing part by the county. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President. And to the citizens of District 3, my phone has been ringing for the past couple of weeks, or several weeks rather, about questions about RV and Birdsville and et cetera. I'm going to plan on having a meeting very soon, and we'll be making those announcements on next Tuesday, the date and the time and the place. We're going to meet with the director peers over the Housing Board and for the citizens can ask the questions that they want to ask and be answered. Again, I'm going to be making that time, place on next Tuesday, and we'll let the District 3 residents know. and we'll let the District Three residents know. Anything from the administration? Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, the council will have a committee meeting this afternoon at four o'clock at the Civic Center, and basically just bring us up to date on populace and other things that's going on in the Civic Center.
Mr. President? I just wanted to make certain that the general, the audience heard that Mr. Councilmember Penn did abstain on ordinance sixty-four zero four one. That's the rezoning on University Boulevard.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
And promptly moving second in the discussion.